Long time ago. Call to order, Plymouth Township Board of Trustees meeting Tuesday, March 25th. Call to order at 6:36. Roll call.
Trustee Buckley.
Here.
Trustee Clinton is excused. Supervisor Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Grove.
Here.
Trustee Stewart.
Here.
Clerk Vorba here. We have a quorum.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to be led by our new promoted officer, Tom Champagne.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, I move for the approval of the agenda Tuesday, March 25th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, second by Grove. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval of the consent agenda, I want to remove item 2A.
Mr. Supervisor, I move for the approval of the consent agenda for March 25th, 2025, with the removal of Consent Agenda A. And this has a resolution on it, so we will need a roll call. Is there any conversation?
Do we know why that is being removed?
So I have to do some more homework, so.
Well, why was it put on in the first place? So Steve's here and Kermy?
Yeah, right, okay, he's here, we know him, but.
Well, doesn't he deserve explanation?
No, we need to, I need to sort some things out on the dates. I'm confused, I'm not sure if the dates are right, so gotta do that, sort it out.
Okay, this requires a roll call, and it is, this is approval of the consent agenda minus A, so it will be B only, which is Resolution 2025-03, 2025-25. Trustee Buckley.
Now.
Supervisor Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Dorchevitz.
No.
Trustee Grove.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes, motion carries.
All right. So now we have to... So that's, the consent is approved then?
The consent is approved.
The consent is approved, okay. So we have, for the first item, which I skipped over, is the recognition of Officer Tom Champagne for his promotion to rank of Sergeant. So we'll have Chief Naitel introduce this item.
Supervisor, thank you. Tom, could you step up here, please? Promotion to Sergeant for law enforcement is a very special occasion. I'd just like to acknowledge to start some of the folks that are in the room here to support Sergeant Champagne. First, Sarah, Tom's fiancee is here with her daughter Campbell and Fisher. You can stand up. Very good. And Sarah's mom and dad are here, Pat and Alice. Tom's twins are here, Madeline, who's a Grand Valley graduate, anchor up, and Stephen, who you might recognize as one of our DPW workers, so who does a great job. Not present, who's gonna be watching on TV, is gonna be Tom's eldest, oldest son, Dylan, who's a baseball player, and he's training down for the pros down in Tampa, Florida. Really, really good baseball player, so.
Tickets.
Yeah, there you go, right? Don't forget the clerk there, right? And we also have, Tom's mom couldn't be here today because she had a medical situation. She's good, but just could not be here. And then, of course, we have Chief Jerry Champagne. Could you stand up, Chief? Chief worked law enforcement for several different departments, led his agencies, also worked and was in charge of the criminal justice program at Schoolcraft College my first couple of months here. Chief called me a couple of times and said he had some training slots that were, he couldn't fill. They were free and wanted me to know if Plymouth Township could use them. So I said absolutely, and we filled those, but thank you, Chief, for being here today.
Thank you.
Also, very importantly, is we have a lot of law enforcement officials here in the room. So Sergeant Ballmer, Justin Ballmer's here, is working. One of our officers off duty there, John Stempel, one of our newest officers with his two beautiful daughters here today. Luke, one of our detectives, Sergeant Titterington. Cassandra Ballmer, one of our PSAs is here, Sergeant Fritz. And then, of course, the Assistant Chief, Dan Cudra. And last but not least, on March the 4th, 2004, I was promoted to Sergeant at the Farmington Hills Police Department, and my father pinned my badge, which we'll do tonight, and my dad's here as well. So my dad heard that Tom was, my dad is a frequent flyer at our senior fraud seminars, and I told him that Tom was getting promoted today, so he wanted to make sure he was here for Tom. So Sergeant Tom Champagne has served in law enforcement for 27 years. He retired from the Canton Police Department seven years ago and started his career here at the Plymouth Township Police Department, two weeks later on the midnight shift. During his career, Tom has worked as a motorcycle traffic enforcement officer. Additionally, Tom is a field training officer. He has trained numerous new police officers, not only here, but in the township of Canton. Tom worked as a detective, a senior investigator. Tom investigated and solved many armed robbery cases, bank robbery cases, and homicide cases in his career. Additionally, Tom worked as a, and this where many of you may know Tom. Tom was a task force officer with Homeland Security Investigation, and on top of investigating criminal organizations, not only in this part of the state of Michigan, he investigated cases that went throughout the United States as well as around the world. So Tom had a great career there. During his time, he was honored as the Task Force Officer of the Year for the entire state of Michigan for his relentless and successful investigations, not only in our area, but throughout the world. Other assignments Tom has involved include the Rapid Response Team, and Sergeant Cox and I made the decision that Tom will remain on our Honor Guard team. I know, John, you've seen that team in action, they're one of the best in the state, and he will lead that in a sergeant. Tom was born and raised in southeast Michigan and has bachelor's degree from Madonna University. Chief, I would ask you to step forward and pin your son's badge. I know how proud you are, and we couldn't be more proud of your son.
Ma'am. Ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead if you want to take a picture.
Hey, Dad.
Glad to introduce Sergeant Tom Champagne. I also mentioned to the Board of Trustees that Tom's position is a swing shift night position. It was a strategy that we developed. We upgraded a police officer position to supervisor so that we can make sure that we have supervisors on the ship. So when our midnight sergeants have vacation time, training, things like that, Tom will fill those gaps and make sure that we have supervision on the road, which again will result with just continued service to our township residents. So again, Sergeant Tom Champagne.
Thank you, Chief.
Tom, you want to say something real quick? Go ahead.
Oh, sure. Members of the board, Supervisor Kermy, and to my family and the citizens here today, my friends and colleagues that are here, thank you. And to my son in Florida who's watching, and the citizens watching at home, thank you. I'm grateful for this opportunity to be a part of this great leadership team that Chief Naitel has built, and I look forward to continue giving back and serving this great community. So thank you, thank you for your time.
Public comments.
Now we have public comments, three minutes on non-agenda items. Please speak into the microphone. We have a tall one now. Is YouTube working yet? Do we know?
I'm Dale Bernhardt. Love or hate him, Donald Trump will reduce our federal taxes in size of government. He's going through each department by line item looking for waste, fraud, and abuse. How refreshing. Politicians and bureaucrats develop their own agendas, which displaces the will of the people, who only wish to keep more of their money. President Trump knows if he can reduce federal taxes, citizens will use their extra money to stimulate the economy through purchases. Government doesn't grow the economy, consumers do. Local governments have an obligation as well to keep taxes as low as possible while still providing a healthy and safe place to live. Low taxes allow residents to keep their homes attractive and make purchases from local businesses. Local governments need to scrutinize every line item in their budgets. Our former supervisor did not question or scrutinize expenditures. Chuck Kermy and some board members are, and our residents appreciate that. But he needs help from the entire board and administration, not resistance at every suggestion. Citizens want the board members to work together. Issues will arise. Work them out. Local taxes represent the largest portion of taxes most residents pay, more than state and federal. U.S. homeowners paid, on average, $3,100 for local taxes in 2024. What do we pay? Probably three times more. So big opportunities exist on the local level. Eliminating HVA, as former supervisor wished, would be a huge tax burden. Some board members have allowed a one-sided propaganda campaign against HVA without recognizing that there are probably issues that need to be fixed with both ambulance services. Township Park Sprayscape represents another opportunity and example to reduce cost. Just because 300,000 was budgeted, that doesn't mean you have to spend it all. With a little work, Chuck Kermy found a much less expensive and more viable option to resolve the problem. That is what we want from our leadership. We expect the board to look at issues with imagination and energy. I ask this board to be obsessed with helping your fellow residents. No resident, rich or poor, wants to be taken advantage of and pay more in taxes than is needed. Remember, the rich pay accountants thousands of dollars to save on their taxes. Unfortunately, the middle class and poor don't have the financial resources to hire accountants, so it is up to this board to act as their accountants to save their tax money. Remember, financial burdens are huge mental stressors. They cause strokes, heart attacks, alcoholism, family discourse, and many other health and societal issues. A goal of residence is to reside in an affordable environment. Keeping taxes low goes a long way towards fulfilling that goal and may help eliminate a few ambulance runs. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to F1, which are budget amendments that are required for ongoing new information that affect the budget. And Elizabeth Cootie, our finance director, will tee those up. Elizabeth, you can go ahead and get started while he's bringing that up, I think. We're starting at the first item, which was $109,700.
There is a memo that accompanies my worksheet, which kind of summarizes the financial impact on both the expenditure side and the revenue side. So you can see on here the amount of the appropriations or revenue recognition I am presenting to you tonight, and I will go into a little bit more detail. There is detail on this memo, but I may have a couple of different, different things to add. The majority of the adjustments relate to compensation items, meaning salaries, wages, and/or insurance costs. And it's just a result of me doing a more thorough review since we adopted the budget in December, catching up on new hires, staff changes, any rate changes I may have missed, changes to work schedules, et cetera. This amendment does not include the salary increases for the non-represented. That was presented and approved at the February 11th board meeting. So this is, this is other adjustments aside from that. General Fund, just, I'll highlight a couple of the items here on this account number worksheet. Our payroll staff member will be taking on some additional duties, and she will, hopefully, by her doing that, we will be able to reduce the contracted services line item for HR. There'll be a little bit of a shift in duties, and it should be a little less costly that way. In the treasurer's department, he realigned some staff, and we realized a little bit of savings in retirement contributions and health insurance costs as a result of that. I adjusted the 35th District Court Cost Sharing line item. They recently approved their 2025 budget, and they've sent out invoices to all of the municipalities that support them. So I'm just truing that up to what we expect it will be, the total cost for the year. Police Department has some budget adjustments due to hiring of additional officers. And there's also a small amount in there for travel expenses for the chief to attend an LIV golf tournament to observe and learn about operational plans, and that's coming up here, I think, next month?
Yeah, first week of April.
Okay, all right. Dispatch adjustments are just a result of their contract being settled right at the end of the year, and now I'm, I've got all of their, their wages and everything at the correct level. Fire Department also has some miscellaneous compensation adjustments, and his budget also has a small amount in there for him to also attend the LIV golf tournament the first week of April, along with Chief Naitel. A small adjustment to our intergovernmental services line item. Intergovernmental services are when one fund provides services to another fund. We basically allocate cost to the fund that is receiving the service. So I made a small adjustment there in the supervisor's office for some additional assistance that's being provided by one of our other staff members. The transportation fund, again, not much in there, just compensation-related adjustments. We had a part-time driver who started with us in 2024, and he is, he's no longer with us, so we're back down to one driver. And I, I've heard that there's no plan to replace that person at this point in time. Water and Sewer Fund, miscellaneous compensation-related adjustments. The only other significant item in there was, there was a quote for some meter parts, and it came in pretty far under budget, so I reduced that line item just a little bit. The revenue side, there's just two items. In the DDA Fund, we've got a $68,400 revenue line item, and that is a recovery of personal property tax reimbursement that didn't make it to us right away. There was a little snafu with Treasury, State of Michigan Treasury Department, receiving the fund that we had to file. And as a result, that revenue did not come in. Once we discovered that, that had occurred, Bob and I discussed with Treasury, you know, what happened? How can we rectify this, et cetera, et cetera? And so through that process, we learned that the, I'll call it unclaimed personal property tax reimbursement revenue that should have gone to the DDA went back to the taxing authorities that, that levied these millages. So part of that money went back to Wayne County, and part of it went back actually into Plymouth Township General Fund revenues. So we've recovered the money from Wayne County that was rightfully ours, and this relates back to fiscal year 2023. So I guess better late than never, but. So we have that now, and then I'm going to work on getting the funds transferred from our General Fund over to the DDA to make up the rest of that revenue that we did not receive.
Is that from, coming from the General Fund? Part of that $68,400, or is it in addition?
It's in addition. So the total amount of revenue that we did not receive in October of 2023 was about $105,000. $68,000 of it was due to Wayne County millages.
Good catch.
Yeah, so.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah.
Can I have a raise?
We're gonna book that as a save.
That's, that's really about it. Any, any other questions?
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees hereby adopt Resolution 2025-3-25, authorizing the Finance Director to appropriate the fund balance, amending the 2025 General Fund, the 2025 Transportation Fund, the 2025 Water and Sewer Fund, the 2025 Rubbish Collection Fund, and DDA Fund for a total appropriation in the amount of $109,700, a total revenue in the amount of $79,700.
Second.
Second, and a second by... And now we need a roll call. Trustee Buckley.
Yes.
Supervisor Kermy. Yes. Treasurer Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Grove.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes, motion carries. All right, next item is an expenditure by the Police Department to expend $30,000 to outfit a vehicle. And he's gonna tell us a little bit about why the number is so big. About half the price of the vehicle.
Yes, good evening. So yes, the Police Department is requesting to spend no more than $30,000 to continue the upfitting of patrol vehicle 24-4. So this particular vehicle is going to be a new build. It will be bringing our patrol fleet up to 10. Probably have been operating with nine for quite some time. Unfortunately, a few years ago, one of our vehicles sustained a vehicle fire, and all of the equipment that we'd have been able to transfer from that vehicle to the next build was completely lost in that fire. So we've been out, down to nine vehicles for some, some time now, but as our staffing levels are finally beginning to recoup, as we're bringing solid officers on board, we are gonna need this 10th vehicle to be able to provide efficient services to our community. So if it's approved, we'll go ahead with this project. Winder's Police Equipment in Southgate is our trusted outfitter, and they will begin work on this process. This particular vehicle is gonna be more dedicated towards the swing shift sergeant and myself for driving and operating throughout the course of our workday. It's gonna be a little bit different than the other ones. It's just gonna have a single prisoner compartment in the rear that allows some additional storage for, for gear. I'll be able to have a less lethal launcher secured back there instead of in the back of the vehicle. Shotgun rack will be back there, halogen tool, a ram, stuff like that will be secured with locking mechanisms, so it's not subject to being a projectile if we're rear-ended by another vehicle, so. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to discuss them.
I have a couple. Everything, all the equipment we're buying here is new. There's nothing carryover from a previous, our inventory.
Yeah, that's correct, so all the emergency equipment, things of that sort, it's gonna be all, unfortunately, it's all new.
Explain the rear seat, and this is why. Because I want to ensure that you request that the setup allows the full rearward travel of the seat, of the, the driver's seat. So is the passenger only, the prisoner only on the passenger side?
Yeah, so the prisoner is just gonna be...
I want to be able to get comfortable, because some of these guys are pretty big, and so they need to have as much rearward travel of the track as possible without it hitting a hard stop and shortening the travel and also wearing out the motors.
Yeah, so I had the exact conversation with Dick Jr. at Winder, just asking, inquiring about that. So yes, the driver's seat will be able to travel forward and back as far as it can, and then recline as well. So in the event that we have an officer that is much larger stature than I, they would be able to sit there and be comfortable operating that vehicle. So on the passenger side, there is a little bit of an expansion. As they've been installing some of these single prisoner compartments, Winder's has learned, and they've made some adjustments to that compartment back there to make it a little bit wider, to handle people and have a little bit more comfort level if they're, they're transporting a prisoner or a member of the public back there.
You anticipate that future vehicle upsets will have a single side for the rear passenger or prisoner?
I'm sorry, you're, are you asking about future builds?
Do you think you're gonna move to this trend of single side?
I think it's something that we'd have to take a look at, we'd have to study, to see, one, because there's gonna be additional costs, right? Because if we're going from, our traditional is a two-person seat in the rear.
So full width?
Yes. If we do, if we do decide to change, then we're gonna be having to, to purchase some additional equipment, and that's gonna increase our, our update cost. So, you know, we like to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, so we like to try to keep the cost down as much as we can.
If we can make it work, we'll want to get into that some more because driver comfort and fatigue is important, and health. We don't want people getting back problems. We want them to be able to recline to the desired position and have the track fully travel rearward. But we can talk about that.
Yeah, that'll be something that we take a look at. This will be the first one that we've had. We've had another patrol vehicle, you know, years ago, it was a Taurus that was a single one. It worked out okay, but the passenger and the prisoner side was, was a bit small. So that's why we, we didn't do any more like that, but they've been able to make it a bit wider for storage of, of people in the back, so we'll...
Let's keep working it and see if we can get an optimum solution.
Supervisor, I move to approve Resolution 2025-03-25-27, authorizing the Plymouth Township Police Department to outfit patrol vehicle 24-4, not to exceed $30,000 out of the capital outlay account.
Second.
Second by Trustee Grove. Trustee Grove?
Yes.
Trustee Stewart?
Yes.
Treasurer Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Buckley?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Supervisor Kermy? Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is F3, which is the Fire Department is purchasing two self-contained breathing apparatus with an acronym of SCABA. What's the proper...
SCBA.
SCBA.
It's not like scuba.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Board. This is, as you see, the capital item budget request in front of you. This is for two additional that were budgeted for 2025. The only difference is we budgeted $26,000 when we did the original quote for this. $26,000 was adequate, however, the cost has gone up by $1,500 due to the nature of things right now. Supervisor Kermy reached out to him, tried to get him to reduce the price, was not successful.
I was a failure.
He gave, he gave his best effort. But unfortunately, we're still not able to get the price down, but still. This is for two complete units. This will include two, the backpack, the regulators, two masks. Our SCBA also has... Um, our SCBA also have a built-in thermal imaging device in them, and all the SCBA have what's called a PaaS device, um, which is the, uh, personal alert safety system. So if a firefighter goes down in a fire, it alerts you, it makes a lot of noise and lets you know where they are. Um, also flashes lights and things, uh, which is a very vital piece of equipment, and it's actually, uh, required on our SCBA now. It has to be built into them. The additional, uh, $1,500 is I have in the, uh, Operational Tools and Supplies Budget, so it should be able to cover that. I talked to, um, Finance Director Cootie about that, and she said that's, that's perfectly acceptable to do it that way. Um, but the, we do, uh, one thing we did get is, um, this was kind of a package deal because we bought the two. We did get a two additional air bottles, which we can put in our fleet at, at, um, no cost, which is about a, a $3,000 value, $28.84 is what the savings of that is. Can I ask any questions?
So for information, these are the most optioned, top-of-the-line. Maybe one thing is not on this.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty...
They're, they're the, they're designed to be compatible with our current, uh, version, so they're interchangeable. If someone, you know, uh, has to change out, they don't have to do any, they're used to it. They're, they have muscle memory, they know what to look for, they're trained.
Exactly.
So that's why we're going to the fully optioned version is to be consistent with our current fleet of these.
Which is very important for us, because you don't wanna have, you don't wanna have a tool built into the pack you're used to and it's not there when you need it.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board of Trustees does hereby adopt Resolution Number 2025-03-25-28 to purchase two MSAG-1 self-contained breathing apparatus from fire equipment supplier McQueen for a cost not to exceed $27,600.
Second. Second by... Dorchevitz? Clerk Borba, yes? Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Chevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Stewart?
Yes.
Trustee Grove?
Yes.
Trustee Buckley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So it's 7:10, and there's been no video?
Yeah, there is no... It's being captured and will be broadcast, just that it's not YouTube-ing.
It's not live streaming.
This will be put up, uh, tomorrow. So, I'm gonna go to item F4. It's the Deputy Clerk Salary Adjustment, and this is to maintain the alignment between Deputy Clerk, Deputy Treasurer, that they have the same pay increase. Last meeting, we increased the pay by the same amount, $3,000, uh, for the Deputy Treasurer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As, as you related, that we discussed this thoroughly last, uh, last meeting, and so this is just to bring parity between the, uh, the two deputies.
Did we, this was not on the set, on the budget amendments today? Or it was?
Those two are gonna be put in later.
Oh, that's later?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-3-25-29 to approve the fixed salary adjustment to $83,000 for the full-time office of Deputy Clerk effective March 17, 2025.
Second.
Okay, second by Buckley? Clerk Borba, yes? Supervisor Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Buckley?
Yes.
Trustee Grove?
I just wanna say at the last meeting, I was very clear about the fact that, uh, two should be together, so I will be voting yes. I am voting yes on this.
You're voting yes?
Trustee Stewart?
No.
Treasurer Chevitz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Did you call me?
You did.
Yes, I did, okay.
I, I have not, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
I haven't seen... Forgive me. Two years in personnel at the Michigan Municipal League, full-time. Cities and townships all across Michigan. Wage and salary studies, position classification. I have not seen either of those for Plymouth Township.
You're right, and I, I need to work that.
A position classification, a wage and salary study, and this could benefit some people. However, it's just, it's an omission. We have no one who is in charge of personnel. We have no one in charge of, uh, human relations, HR. We're, we're, we seem to be just arbitrarily, instead of being professional and providing a position classification chart or a wage and salary study, we just shoot from the hip. Thank you, I have nothing more. The vote, next issue?
Input taken. All right, so we have now public comments, again. Limited to three minutes on anything.
Okay, I, I would like to... We have a gentleman here from Plymouth Township, uh, who I greatly admire. The Big Three. He's a graduate of San Alphonsus, East Airborne, the University of Michigan, a staffer of 40 years, and he has been the Chair of our Planning Commission, and in my humble opinion, he runs an excellent meeting, and the supervisors can learn from him. I would like to ask for a round of applause for our reappointment tonight of Dennis Chabalski.
We didn't, we didn't reappoint him. We did reappoint him, but we like what he did, so, we like what he does. Uh, okay, public comment, three minutes on anything. Nothing? Nobody? All right. Board comments. We'll start with Bob Dorchevitz.
Did you, uh, uh, understand that you turned down the, uh, grant for the, for the master plan?
Yes.
Assistance, why was that?
It was $45,000 because it had some requirements that I don't know if we can meet.
What were they?
It would have to do with housing. So, uh, I don't know if that's what we wanna do with our master plan, so it gives us more freedom. We're not going to spend $100,000 like typically you would have to spend to do it like Canton Township or Northville Township. So we're gonna, we're five years behind right now. We didn't do one in 2020, so we're now due for the next one. So we're gonna start talking about that. Uh, the Planning Commission is the leader of that, so that's the story on the, the grant.
Okay.
Sometimes money comes with requirements that you don't think you can meet, and then it puts you in a box. All right, you, go ahead, you have more comments?
No, I have, I have nothing else.
Jennifer?
Any update on the Sprayscape?
Yeah, I'll do that after everybody's done here.
Okay.
Plus I have some other items.
I'm good.
You're good?
Nothing else.
I, I just wanna say that the last meeting, we discussed extensively the issue of the deputies and the deputies' pay. And I had, and I did say, and I agree with Trustee Stewart, that we do have serious issues here with the lack of, um, job descriptions, job classifications, performance reviews. My reason for voting for this is that this board has historically put both deputies' pay at, to be the same. And at the last meeting, the Deputy Treasurer was approved for the $3,000 raise, so I believe I would be remiss if I did not agree to grant the same to the Deputy Clerk in light of the fact that I made a huge issue about the fact that this is, has been board practice, and it is the right thing to do.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, um, it was my privilege, when I served as state rep for, state representative for six years, the Republicans kind of sent me off to be with the eggheads, to be Chairman of Higher Education, to work with the, the 15 major public universities and to set their budgets. When I hosted Mary Sue Coleman here in Plymouth, the President of the University of Michigan, I was very proud that Dennis Chabalski showed up. He is an, he was an honorable, he is retired. He was an honorable staffer at the University of Michigan for 40 years. I have been informed that our Chief of Police will receive his Masters in May. He will complete all requirements for his Master's Degree from the University of Michigan. When I came here yesterday morning at quarter to nine, Mr. Riley, uh, Mike Riley appreciates that as a graduate of the University of Michigan, but when I came here at quarter to nine yesterday morning, I walked in the door for swearing in of our new police officer, Eric Christensen. We have more police officers on the road now than ever in the history of Plymouth Township. The Chief looked at me and he said, "Mr. Stewart, I've run my three miles already today." Physical fitness, mental fitness, and emotional fitness go hand in hand. Boy, did I like that. I hope that attitude and philosophy can permeate all the people and all the residents of, of Plymouth. Thank you.
All right, um, no particular order. You've probably heard a lot of, uh, comments about a car wash potential coming, uh, next to the Burger King on Anover Road tomorrow morning, tomorrow night. The Planning Commission will be discussing that, and they will decide whether to recommend to the Township Board, uh, to approve a conditional rezoning. But there's many tales and many lawyers in this, because there's a consent agreement from 1976 that restricts the uses of that property and essentially made it a Victani, uh, gym for a long time. That would have to be changed, so there, just because it's approved tomorrow, or if it's approved, does not mean it's going to happen. It has a long way to go. And there's a lot of potential misinformation about there, that the Board, the Board has never considered this before. It was approved by the Planning Commission, uh, but it did not come to the Township Board.
Just to clarification on that, the Planning Commission, uh, makes a recommendation, whether to approve or, or deny, but it's a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Yes, correction, yep. So, that's creating a lot of stir out there. Obviously, there's a lot of lawyering going on there. Virginia Tile is moving here from Farmington Hills, and they've just started, uh, clearing land and are going to have steel delivery on a compressed basis because of timing in a couple of weeks. That's, will be on Schoolcraft Road just west of 275. There'll be several houses torn down to make that, uh, possible. Uh, Meyer on Five Mile Road, which has been approved, is potentially coming forward by April 9th to receive their permits so that they can get under the wire and not have to change their plans to meet the new building codes that take effect on April 10th. Don't know when they are actually going to break ground, but they're going to get their permits, uh, under the wire. And they have a year to, I think they have a year to start the job based on that. The permit stays in effect for a year. Sidewalk repairs is continuing. It will start probably in July. We have a little bit of a glitch we have to work through because the Environmental Protection Agency, uh, has made a change to accomplish emission standards, and it resulted in the formulation changes for cement, Portland cement. And we're already seeing surface failures on the concrete we poured last summer because of that.
Scaling.
Yeah, scaling, it's, they're using Portland lime, um, in order to meet the emissions, so they're gonna have to do some type of workaround. I set the direction, I don't wanna pour concrete that we know is going to have surface failing. It's not structural, but it just is appearance-related. So some people will be dissatisfied. We don't have any intention, unless there's a major lawsuit, uh, from the Portland cement makers, to pay for replacements, and I don't expect them to do that. They might pay for the material, but they're not gonna pay for the labor to take it out and report.
Isn't it covered by the warranty?
Well, that's questionable, uh, because it's a material failure. A similar thing happened with the Environmental Protection Agency in the 90s.
Yeah.
That caused massive structural failures, but hopefully this isn't that case. It's more appearance-related cosmetic scaling off. Um, Main Street has already experienced some of it. The sidewalk was pulled, poured about a year and a half ago. Compost pickup doesn't start till April 7th. All right, um, another item is, some of you have received the annual Hilltop, um, handout. Uh, they returned a check for $66,000, but this is on a variable, variable basis. This is not a profitable entity. It makes a variable profit of about $140,000 a year. We split that, and then the money is plowed, half of the money then is plowed back, half again of that money is plowed back. So if you did it fully accounted, it would not be profitable. But we're gonna look into that and get the, because there's depreciation of carts and some, some things like that. But, um, at least we're getting, uh, some money, but remember, we pay $75,000 a year in a management fee. So we got a check for $66,000 last week, and we're going to spend $75,000 in a couple of weeks to give them their annual management fee. So it's a back-and-forth of money. Uh, it's not a lucrative venture, but we will continue to work it. I don't think the profitability will soar to the levels it was of $250,000 plus, uh, 20 years ago. All right, let's talk about Sprayscape. Today, the drawings, which I have set here in my hand, went to four bidders. Uh, we've asked them to provide their, um, quotes next week, April 1 or 2, and, um, the engineering estimates is that it will be less than one-third of what we budgeted. It'll be something well under $100,000. And there's a high probability we'll have it done by June 1st, but it's still an open issue depending on how they quote and how their timing goes. It's a pretty simple solution. It's a eight-inch pipe made of plastic, and we use, have two manholes, and we'll be operating a system with, uh, gate valves to keep the stormwater out of the sanitary sewer as much as possible, especially during the off-season when it's not being used. That's about all I have of...
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Forgive me, but is it fair to say, reasonable to say, that honor before July 1st, the Sprayscape shall be opened?
That's a very high probability, unless, we gotta see how these quotes and their timing comes in.
Okay.
Uh, but it looks very positive. It, it's possible if we can get a local contractor who is more flexible and more, probably has less overhead, they may be able to move faster. But, um, Spalding Decker is managing those details and making sure that, uh, the quotes are good and the timing is a commitment.
I have a 40-year-old daughter, a younger daughter, and, uh, she, her birthday is June 20. We can never have a pool party, because it's just not warm enough. So that's why I said, if you would keep us informed and give public notice that the Sprayscape will open honor before July 1st.
I'd say there's a, probably an 80% chance of that, but I can't commit 100%. If we're really lucky, it'll open before that. And luck, you make your own luck, so we're managing it to get that luck, to achieve that luck.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.